You've obviously heard from Fort Hill with this request initially and then the neighbors. And we appreciate the opportunity to come before this board and request either an amendment or a clarification or whatever you want to call it. And I think it's important to note that Fort Hill chose to locate in East Hampton. It too has a voice in this and we appreciate the opportunity for speaking that voice. So, moving on, we gave the site plan showing parking to Jessica on Monday, which I guess was yesterday. And Eric went over it with Jessica. It shows parking adequate to accommodate the spots that it's requesting. And do you want me to kind of stop at each thing that we propose?
Yeah.
Or do you want me to give a summary of them and then?
I think it'd be fine if we kind of hit one issue at a time and then kind of discuss what they've got here. Do you all agree with that?
Yes.
Totally agree.
Chat, you on board?
Yes.
So let's start with your first item then, which looks like parking. Do you want to tell us about what you've done here and then we'll start asking questions?
Sure. So, we wanted to keep the gravel parking lot as we talked about last time. That seemed to be the more environmentally sensitive way of addressing the landscape that allows for better drainage. It was something that you guys had discussed at, well Eric and the planning board at the time in 2011, had discussed keeping a gravel parking lot and not doing paving. We propose parking not in, you know, I guess just to, if we do like a northeast-southwest on this, not in the south part of the property, which is kind of that field which looks towards the mountain, which is probably not the south part, is it? Oh, no.
I think.
Yeah, it is. If east, Fort Hill Road is on the east side, I guess. So, you'll see the cars come in from the east side and there is the parking there that is pretty much existing. Those are the existing cars, yeah?
Well, the entire parking lot is existing. But I guess as originally defined by the original sketch.
So, there's the original. So, we're looking at 60 spaces. My numbers mesh here. We've got some criteria I think we need to go through to make sure that it applies. 10.14 of our zoning ordinance talks about commercial spaces. And I just want to kind of read through that. Do you want to help me maybe read off the first couple of them and we'll see what, just walk through them, start with the front yard?
Sure. And I do think we're going to run across a couple of things that are maybe not consistent with what's being proposed. So I just want to say that from the get-go that this may have to go back for further review based on what our requirements are.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so this applies to parking and loading areas containing over five spaces. So we've got, "Front yard areas, parking spaces shall not be located within the required front yard area in any district."
So, looking at this map, my guess is that the front yard is sort of this area where the, where the road is. Would you, would you agree?
It refers to the front setback.
Yeah, what is the front setback for this?
So the front setback for the industrial zone. Fifty, uh, da-da-da-da-da, 50 feet.
50?
Mm-hmm. So, it just can't be within the first 50 feet of the front of the parcel. So, I'm not sure what the scale of the site plan is, but...
It's one inch equals 50 feet. And that looks like it might be about right to me. I mean, it's hard to be...
No, this is not to scale.
That's why I asked for the scale plan earlier. Um, do you know what this got shrunk down to?
No, I don't.
Okay. I mean, it doesn't look to me that as if it's within the, in the front 50 feet. It looks like it's, it's fine, but without having a proper plan with the correct scale on it, it's difficult to tell. But I, my eyeball looks at it and says that it's probably not within the front setback.
Does anyone here have a disagreement with that?
No. It looks close enough.
I ask a question before we continue through this list. So there's about 10 items or more on this list. It could be really time-consuming to go through all this. And I also wonder if maybe the burden is on the applicant to look at this and bring a sample that reflects that they've considered what's...
Well, I would agree, except I haven't yet seen anything that doesn't. So, I mean, we have to prove it at some point, so we may as well do it.
Okay, so let's go through. But if we don't have a scale, if we don't have a scale plan, it's going to, it may be difficult to say for sure.
Hard. Yeah. I mean, that looks close enough to me that I personally would be willing to say that, you know, the intent here, that that's not in violation. Maybe that's not the same case for you guys, you know, but if something comes closer.
All right, so let's, let's continue.
I was out there today and it looked like there was two.
Yeah. So let's look for something else.
So, okay. The next one, "Parking and loading spaces shall not, not permit park, backing of automobiles onto any street." I think that we're okay.
You've got a loop around the building so they can go all the way around. They're not required to back out.
Uh, "Open air parking space shall be at least five feet from any building." Again, hard to tell without the scale.
Yeah. These spots right up front, you've got kind of like an awning overhang and I'm guessing that constitutes part of the building.
Well, that's the porch, right? That?
The porch is just under the awning.
And it's greater than five feet wide?
So that one's a little bit closer.
Yeah.
All right. So we're going to need to get information on that. I want to continue through these. So let's try to blaze through them.
So lighting, is there lighting in the parking lot?
No lighting. And what does it say that you're required to have?
It doesn't say that it is required. It says that if there is lighting, it has to direct the light away from the street and away from adjoining premises. You see that on purpose.
All right.
Here's the one.
Yeah, but I...
"Surfacing. The area and access driveways thereto shall be surfaced with a bituminous or cement concrete material and shall be graded and drained so as to dispose of all surface water accumulation."
So, it appears to have to be paved.
It appears to me that the parking lot has to be paved according to our current zoning ordinance.
Yep. Uh, "Surface with bituminous or cement concrete." And I'm guessing bituminous from what I heard earlier is like asphalt. Yeah. Okay.
So, and that, and that's not...
That's 10.27 of the ordinance for...
10.145.
For parking for commercial properties. That's 10.145, as she said.
Yeah.
So that's right there in the zoning ordinance that we need to, we need to meet that criteria.
That's a shall, not a may.
That's a killer. And at that point, I think that we do have to, you know, we hit the wall. There may be more going forward. And I highly recommend that you look, that you look at these items that are in this list and try to meet our criteria. And we definitely need to see the full plan. I mean, I feel like you kind of started to put some stuff together and mapped it out, but we need to see the spacing, the marking, because our job is to review the specifications according to the guidebook. So you got to help us, help us meet that criteria.
Okay.
All right. So let's move forward from parking because we ran into a dead end there. No pun intended.
So if we move on to the sound mitigation, so you had proposed that the brewery consider some type of plantings or other type of sound mitigation, um, sound mitigation device. And the brewery did consider the plantings. It looked into this a little more. And if you'll, you know, if you look at the property line as well, so if I can describe where the musicians generally play, this might help lead into what our sound mitigation proposal plan is.
Maybe I'll speak about sound.
Okay.
All right. So, in our research, we saw that, you know, install, Eric, you know, installing trees that would be upwards of five feet tall, not only would be very expensive, but probably really wouldn't deal with the sound concerns. I guess there was one concern from one of our neighbors about our glycol chiller. We went through great length in order to get rid of the sound by installing a 12-foot fence and installing noise dampeners. But this still was apparently not enough. So, I, it's, it's very nice to have, you know, the idea of planting trees. I even approached my neighbor, Tom Koziel, about, I guess he was, he was willing to install trees by, I guess, the corner of Fort Hill Road and his property. But in reality, I, we don't think that those trees would do much. So in order to mitigate the noise from the music, we propose a giant plexiglass wall. This will reverberate the noise from musicians. And if it's too loud for them, they will obviously turn it down. But this will be a much more resourceful way of dealing with the noise rather than spending money on three-foot trees that will only do something in 20 years.
Well, that's interesting. I haven't heard that one before. Anyone have an opinion? No?
Um, I'm starting processing.
Yeah. Go ahead. I mean, it seems like it's a step. It certainly seems like it would block more noise. It's a solid object barrier. I'm not sure about, you know...
But he also mentioned some other barrier. Do you have another barrier in mind or is the plexiglass what you're going to be using?
That was our, um, we would...
Where would it...
...our presentation, but if you would like a larger...
Where would it go?
Directly behind the van or directly behind the porch.
Can you show me that exactly here, just so I see?
All right, there.
Right there, blocking sound from going that way, which is toward, toward East Street.
Okay. Yeah, Fort Hill's right here. That's close.
Sorry.
And if I peer short, I got 6,000 gallons of beer just sitting in a, I got a valve that broke.
Oh, no.
So right now...
Okay.
We're, we're spending our time here.
So, so that would definitely seem to, you know, bounce sound in this direction. In this direction, I'm not, I'm not certain, but that seems to me to be a positive step anyway. Does anyone have...
It's a portable barrier, so I'm looking at, there's a little more information in the proposal that, that's written here.
So, yeah, we envisioned it being portable so that depending on the, you know, the size of the band, not that we expect to have a 12-piece brass band coming in, but, and also that way it won't be an aesthetic intrusion either from the road or possibly the neighbor's house and, or from the brewery.
Four decibels. But that's an estimate as before, so... Okay. Forgive me, people, but we just got this document. It was handed in late, so we're going to need some time to process it. All right. Let's move on. The occupancy control plan.
So, the brewery has the occupancy limit of 87 persons. And I do, I just want to correct the record. Last time we were here, we misstated the size of the tasting room and it's, it's not about 2,000 square feet. That included office space and other space. It's about 600 square feet. So the 87-person limit, basically the brewery sees the parking plan and the limit helping one another out. So the fact that the parking will be limited, the occupancy will be limited also. That obviously doesn't address direct, direct attention that the brewery will focus on occupancy and how to enforce that. And so, it proposes that in order to ensure compliance with the occupancy limit, it designates a specific employee in charge of enforcing the occupancy limit.
Which is 87, right?
Mm-hmm. 87 for the tasting room area, not for the entire building. And that employee will be designated responsible during any shift when the tasting room is open. They will keep track of occupancy and when it appears that occupancy is nearing capacity, they will do, conduct counts and ensure that if at any time occupancy limit is reached or about to be reached, they'll deny entry to people that try to thereafter enter.
All right. Anyone have any comments about that? No?
That is appropriate.
Would you then limit the number of people coming into your parking lot to 60 vehicles?
Well, it, well, yeah, parking would be limited by terms of the space of being limited.
Because you could potentially fill up your parking lot before you have 87 persons inside. That's all I'm asking.
Right. Yeah. And so that's why we thought they would work together. I mean, basically if the parking lot is full, people aren't going to stay anyway. And so that would be a deterrent on, on reaching that occupancy limit as well.
Will you have someone monitoring that? Because if your parking lot is filled and somebody wants to come in, they're going to, there are areas they can just pull in and walk into the building.
Yeah, if they, you know, make a spot.
So there should be someone. I don't know if you're going to have 60 cars, but the possibility is there, especially if you're having a decent band or you're having some kind of get-together on the weekend or something.
Mm-hmm. Would you... Yeah.
On Saturdays, our busiest day of the week, we typically have three people working behind the bar at other local establishments. It is significantly less. And we have designated that third person to make sure that people stay on the porch, make sure that people do not smoke on the porch, make sure that people do not vape on the porch, and make sure that 87 people is not, we've not reached the comfortable capacity.
So would it be reasonable to have that person also monitor the parking lot?
Absolutely.
Anything else? Those are the three items in the memorandum that you gave us. Did you want to make a conclusion to it before we start to hear anyone else speak?
Um, sure, I do. And then I don't know if you do as well, Eric. You know, again, we want to thank you for your time and consideration. And we would just ask that reasonable, that when you look at our special permit, you didn't think we were out of compliance with it by getting the licensing pouring, by getting the license for the pouring permit. We want to be treated like other breweries in town, like other breweries in the state, and be allowed to do this activity. And that's why we're requesting reasonable conditions. We, we don't want to be a bar. We don't want to be open until 2:00 a.m. and have raucous events. We, we just want to be able to promote and market our beer as other breweries around are able to do. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. I think we're going to finish hearing from the public now and let you have a chance to speak. I'm only looking for the people that haven't had an opportunity to speak yet, so we can start with some hands. Is there anyone out there that wants to talk on this issue at this point? Anyone at all? Come right on down. Please say your name and address.
I'm Tom Koziel and I'm a butter to the brewery. And I live at 172 East Street. It seems as though we're, we're micromanaging that the sound aspect of this is seems what we centered on here. And I just want to bring up the point of the neighborhood, which I have spoke about before, maybe not in this meeting, but in other meetings, that the neighbors, not only the eight or 10 people complaining about the noise on Fort Hill Road, but surrounding neighbors on East Street, wrapping right around to Arthur Street, put up with and get along with neighborhood noise. That includes tailgate slapping, banging, beepers, backup beepers that fall in the paving. We have Hathaway Concrete down the street with, with concrete trucks roaming up and down the neighborhood all week long. Our, our window is there with a lot of traffic. Even the school, even the school has an astronomical amount of traffic going in and out. So there's a lot of noise other than a few hours on the weekend for the brewery. So I just urge the, the board to consider these things and the fairness and the, the need for the brewery to have this entertainment, to promote their, their product so they'll be successful, so we'll have more jobs in East Hampton, and it'll be a proud place to live in to, for people to grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wants to speak that hasn't had a chance to speak yet? Right in the back there. Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hi. My name is Michelle Lewis. I live on Sheldon Avenue in East Hampton.
What, what number?
I live in 3.
3.
So I've lived in East Hampton for 27 years, raised my daughters here. And I'm really proud to call East Hampton home. You know, I don't frequent bars, I don't frequent clubs, I don't frequent clubs, but I do spend time at the brewery. I sometimes feel like that's very different. I feel like I'm supporting something, something positive. I see people there that you wouldn't see in bars. And I just hope this board considers sort of what the brewery brings to East Hampton. I know that balancing the needs of residents, balancing the needs of businesses is complicated. But I think that it's brought some really positive energy to East Hampton. And I hope that the board considers granting this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think I saw you, sir. Come on down.
Dan Rist, East Hampton City Council. I want to thank you for accepting my letter that I sent you the last time. I have a question, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate that you answer it now, but I am curious why paving is required now and it wasn't required in the original permit. Is this because of the new application for the increased area of the pouring area that he's using for his beer? I just don't understand why. And my concern for that, as they mentioned, was environmental. We're going to seal a lot of land, whereas the gravel and paving, the gravel that's there now seems to be better environmentally. I'm just curious about that.
I think it's a good question, and I'm going to endeavor to try and answer it when we have our debate portion.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say that I hope you'll consider what I wrote and that for the greater, a lot of times we have to make decisions in government which aren't pleasing to everybody. Rarely do we get to please everybody. But we create zoning, which you as good, thank, thank you for volunteering to do this, work hard to keep the appropriate business, the appropriate residents in appropriate zones carefully planned. That's what your job is. I believe in this industrial zone allows this activity. And I believe with your conditions being appropriate and reasonable, that it should be allowed. And it's for the greater good of our interest in East Hampton to make our, the wrong perception that we are not business-friendly will be consistently out there if we don't. Start turning that around by doing work that I think will improve our business climate. So businesses will want to move in because they have a fair and reasonable chance with our government. So thank you, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dan. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this? That hasn't spoken? No? Okay. So I'm closing the...
Okay.
Oh, was there one that I missed? You've all spoken before at the last meeting.
I was talking to these other people.
Really? I didn't, I didn't see anyone else speak before.
I didn't speak.
I don't believe Mr. Rist spoke. No.
If they have new information...
No, sorry. Okay, so we're now moving forward.
If they have new information or new testimony, it might be worth considering it, if they have new information. If they don't have new information, I see where you're coming from.
Do you have something different to say that...
If they have something addition to what...
Some new information that you want to give us that's different than what you've said before? Okay, so please come up, state your name, but consider that if it's not different, then we'll end it.
I mean, there's new information that was submitted tonight, so I think the public should have the opportunity to comment on the new information that was provided to the board that hasn't been commented on. That's my point I'm getting at.
Not sure that is new, but okay.
Feel free to discuss.
Before I begin, there seems something...
I'm sorry, name and address.
Yes. Bert Thur, 11 Fort Hill Road. There seems something inherently unreasonable and unfair. If you limit speakers to those who have not spoken before, there are only a set number of residents, neighbors, on Fort Hill Road. Fort Hill Brewery with its Facebook page can solicit and enlist an ever-increasing number of people to testify. That means that we have no capacity to respond because they can have a limitless number and we're limited to six households. Therefore, it is inherently unfair to limit the speaking. I appreciate the opportunity to speak now. You have a copy of the chronology. I apologize, but you don't have to look at it, or at least you don't have to read it all. Because while some things have changed in the earlier portions, in fact, the last two or three pages, the events since the last meeting of this planning board, that will be the focus of our attention. This is our first opportunity to respond to the supplemental memorandum that Fort Hill Brewery submitted before the last meeting of the planning board, and we wish to do that. In addition to that, and indeed before that, we wished to point out that since this board last met, two other boards have also met and have had something to say about this issue directly relevant to the contentions in the memorandum that's before you for consideration. Let me begin with the second part, the subsequent meetings. As you can see by looking on this, on November 2nd, a week after your last meeting, the licensing board met because the neighbors had, had in fact filed a formal complaint concerning activities at the brewery. You can read for yourself the summary of what the neighbors had to say, what the brewery had to say. The important point is what the licensing board had to say. And what they said was that Fort Hill Brewery was in violation of the pouring permit that they had issued. They issued a verbal warning. This had to do with the fact that they had specified that a barrier should be erected between the brewery and where drinking would take place and elsewhere. And that until a belated moment, this simply was not done. It had been for months without being done. So that was a violation. Beyond that, members of that board, like this board, there are members on that board who were there when the original decisions were made and whose recollections, whose memories are primary source testimony as to what the board intended when it made its decision. And members of the licensing board stated clearly, explicitly, that when they issued the later entertainment license, I remind you, very later, three months later when the entertainment itself began on a weekly basis, meaning the brewery was acting without an entertainment license for three months before it got around to applying for an entertainment license. The members of the licensing board said, "When you came to us and asked for approval of music, we thought you meant acoustic music indoors. We had no idea that you meant electronically amplified music outdoors." On November 12th, the zoning board of appeals continued its prior hearing. It'd been waiting for you to make a decision. You had been quiet, so they confronted the issue again. And the question was, remember, the neighbors had appealed the ruling of the, of the building inspector acting as the zoning officer, who had said that there was no inconsistency or contradiction between the original 2011 permit and the subsequent licenses which Eric interpreted to enable him to do the various things that he was doing, which we claimed were in fact exceeding, violating the original special permit. This was discussed, debated, heard from. At the end of the meeting, the zoning board of appeals... At the end of the meeting, the zoning board of appeals took a vote. Three of the five members stated that it was now clear to them that Eric's activities had exceeded, violated his original special permit. Unfortunately for us, in order for that, our appeal to be granted, for the building inspector zoning officers' ruling to be overturned, it would have required a supermajority of four votes. Winning a three to two majority was not quite enough, but it is an indication to everyone, including this board, that a majority, a simple majority of the zoning board of appeals believed that the activities of the Fort Hill Brewery exceeded their permit. Now, that brings us to the matter before you tonight. If we look again at the supplemental memorandum of 26th of October 2015, you will see that from beginning to end, in the introduction, throughout, and in the conclusion, Fort Hill Brewery argues that it is in compliance with all permits and licenses, something I just pointed out, the majority of the licensing board and a simple majority of the zoning board of appeals have rejected, have voted against. And yet it is this very contentious supposition, argument, that underlies everything that Fort Hill Brewery argues for thereafter. If you look closely at the memorandum, you will see that over and over again, they contend that because there are no binding conditions of the special permit, that everything they're doing is fine. It's legal. Now, to arrive at this point, they have done a bit of a legal maneuver, maybe a legalistic sleight of hand. They have attempted to make a distinction between what they call the narrative of the special permit you all granted in 2011. That's where actually all the substance is. But because they came, you asked that they come back and, as you've done on this occasion, and check out two more items, trees and drainage, when they, when the letter is written, the letter assumes all of the conditions, it states them, but it assumes their conditions and does not explicitly call them conditions because they were conditions, everybody understood that. And it speaks in the final paragraph only about the additional two conditions, which Fort Hill Brewery's legalistic splitting of hairs would have you believe, is somehow separate from the narrative. That the only conditions that you were setting upon had to do with trees and drainage. It didn't have to do with all these other things, square footage, parking spaces, all of the really meaty substance matters that were in fact a part of the original special permit. That is the fallacious argument, the specious argument, the legalistically hair-splitting argument that underlies this entire proposal. So the first thing we wish to say as neighbors is we do not accept, and we hope you will not accept, this legalistic argument that they have never been in violation of the original special permit, which you, and two of your members at least, were here in that original board, and they have already stated was their understanding of what that original special permit in fact said, meant, required.
It's a one-minute warning.
I'm sorry?
One-minute warning.
Why the timeline?
I'm going for about eight minutes for each person.
What did they say in eight minutes?
One minute because we have others to get through. Please, try to wrap it up in one minute.
I do not appreciate your place in an arbitrary moment. Okay? The second point is this, they have proposed specific matters, specific proposals, which they claim to be compromises. They're cooperating with the neighbors. They're trying to be good neighbors. The first one, in fact, I get, wants you to approve what you already stated back in September of 2011, you didn't approve. They want you to in fact condone everything they've been doing, as if it were all legal and what, and fine. Second thing is parking. If you read that, parking shall be provided for 60 vehicles. Brewery as built can safely and adequately accommodate parking for 60 vehicles, reflects the capacity of the property. At no point does it say this is to be a limit of 60 vehicles, it just says we can accommodate 60 vehicles. Brewery as built, if we build more to the brewery, were we to add a beer garden, then I guess we could have more parking spaces. Or if we bought more land and added it to it, land that once upon a time was envisioned for growing hops, but forget that, they grow few hops there. Now, in fact, it's, if you take more land, there could be more parking spaces.
I agree. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Listen, in the last meeting too, we tried to keep it to eight, you were the longest speaker there too, and I appreciate your coming up here, please, please.
I'm the only speaker tonight for this side.
Please allow me.
What about the timing that accumulates from all of the other people?
I appreciate it. You've been given two opportunities to speak now and we have heard your message quite clearly. Now, you are the longest speaker and I am trying to keep this for everyone to eight. You was the last, the longest speaker last time and I'm not going to allow anyone else to go over this limit. I did ask very kindly, I believe, in the beginning of this to use brevity. I ask that you respect that, please. Thank you very much. Please, come on up.
I just actually wanted to ask one thing for you guys. When and if you do do another permit, can you specifically put on the bottom of it everything that's in it so that later on, we're not coming back another year to do this again? Can everything be written out in plain?
Our decisions have become much meatier in the past couple of years than they were previously.
That's all I'm asking.
We have...
And I apologize, can we get your name and address too?
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy Truher, 13 Fort Hill Road.
We have a narrative on the application itself, we have a record of the vote, we have the findings of the board, and we have the conditions of the board.
And I actually like the rock parking lot too, because it is better for the water there, because you're right by the water.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that wants to speak? Okay? Is that everybody? All right. So, we need to go through this. It looks like we have one big stopping issue with the parking. They're making five specific requests, but I think the way to go through this is to actually walk through what we're doing with a special, a special permit, what the criteria are for a special permit. When you come before us for an alteration for a special permit, we have to treat it as if it's still a special permit. And it has to qualify for all the steps of a special permit, just as if it was the first time.
Yeah. I would like to add, can I just add that, you know, there's, there's a lot of controversy in the reason that this is before us, but business owners do have the right to request amendments to their special permit as businesses evolve and, you know, that is what we're looking at, is the requested changes that this business is making to its existing permit. Where the zoning board of appeals is dealing with the violation issue that's not before the planning board, so I just want to clarify that for everyone.
Good point.
Very good point.
So the, on 12-1 in our zoning ordinance, the first thing that it says that we have to do in order to grant a special permit is to find a reasonable fulfillment for the following criteria. The first one is conformance with the provisions and ordinances of the cities of East Hampton, the general laws of Massachusetts, and all applicable rules and regulations of state and federal agencies. There's definitely debate that I've heard from, from the residents nearby on this. However, from where it stands, I don't see any of the, any particular issue here that would stop this from going forward based on applicable rules, regulations that's happening right now. Do you guys see that is an issue that would stop this from going forward?
I think that, the way that I view this is that they're requesting, there is, you know, there's been discussion about whether these uses were permitted or not, but I do think that in order to, if we are going to go forward and explicitly, you know, clarify these permitted uses, that we need to go through and think about conditions that may be appropriate to attach based on, you know, an accessory use of having a tasting room and retail, which is accessory to the primary use of manufacturing. So I do think, you know, some of this stuff doesn't seem to have been contemplated by the original permit that was granted. So I think we should talk about, I do have some thoughts about potential conditions. And there's some that the applicant has suggested, but I think we should also discuss our own potential conditions.
I agree with that. If you'll allow, my overall strategy would be to go through these and discuss them one at a time to make sure that we get them in the minutes and the recorded as part of this that we went through these steps.
Great.
And then put together as a result exactly those kinds of conditions and talk about the process as a whole. But I want to dot our i's and cross our t's and know that we went through these.
Sorry, I think I misunderstood what you were saying.
Well, you know, that first issue there of conformance with the provisions of the ordinances of the city of East Hampton, does this amendment to the special permit meet that criteria? I don't see any issues. Does anyone see any issues with that? Okay. The next one is the protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimization of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural, scenic, or historic features on the site. Anyone see any destruction of historic features? No? No?
But, I'm sorry to be so clear, I'm with you on the t's and i's. When we say this, what are we talking about? Are we talking about the additional uses of the tasting room and the retail that we may be allowed to be explicitly stated?
It's a good point. What are we talking about? Just their amendment. And their amendment requests are very specific. They've asked for us to modify the language in the, in the existing amendment for the use of retail and pub. I think there was some amended copy there.
Yeah, I don't think I should pull that out.
So that we can be specific. Any more special permit? That's the original, here's the...
And we have a couple of different versions of that paper.
Yeah, there's so many papers at this point. 2015.
And the supplemental memo dated October 26th.
Say again, please?
The supplemental memo from 4th, dated October 26th.
That's the one where in your supplemental memo you asked for it, but I have to look at the original too, what they're actually...
This is from October 6th?
Yeah, what they're actually requesting here. Application for site plan, special approval, October 6th, 2015. They're seeking to modify and or clarify the terms from the 2011 permit to build and operate a brewery. They go on to say validity of practices, change of law, perings, volume levels. So they say, "We request the planning board permission to offer a stay in the previous pouring permit granted by the state of Massachusetts as well as the town of East Hampton. The serving and sale of glasses of beer ancillary to this, we also request Fort Hill to be allowed to sell such items as t-shirts, glasses, beer for off-premises consumption, and growlers, souvenirs, and other like objects. We request that Fort Hill be permitted to offer live music. We request that parking be permitted for up to," and in this it said 80, you've amended it to 60, "cars. We further request that third parties, e.g. a food truck, be permitted to sell food on site. We believe that the above requested use is consistent with the industrial zoning of Fort Hill property and they believe taken in its entirety of Fort Hill's operation has a minimal effect on the environment." That's, these are what they're requesting. They're requesting live music, they're requesting some things that are outside the purview.
That's kind of what I'm, that's what I'm getting at, is I don't think we can, I don't think we can say specifically anything about live music unless we're designating them as like a, I don't know if we have, do we have a use for that?
So before going through this, you're saying, let's clarify what we can touch on?
Yeah.
And it's really about adding language to the pub and retail component?
Right. Conditions aside, I think we're just talking about...
About that.
Yeah.
And we may add in, as we go through this, we may find other violations or issues, I want to call them violations, issues, like the parking. But the real issue we're here to deal with is the pub and retail component. Are we in agreement on that? Any other ideas?
Add in the entertainment part of it.
In the entertainment part, meaning can they have live music?
Right.
But the entertainment license is separate, I don't think we can touch on that.
No, because there is, if you look, all right, the board's job here is to, is, this is you're making your findings right now. You are finding that they are meeting all of the criteria of the special permit. You are not, as a board, allowed to grant a special permit unless they meet that and you have to find that they're meeting that.
Yep.
So, in the second one, protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimization of any detrimental or offensive uses. Stop. If there are neighbors, or there are people in the public who are saying that they are finding that the noise to be a nuisance, then you need to be addressing that. You don't need to address whether they can or cannot, you need to be addressing what the detrimental impacts may be, if there are any.
That's what I'm saying.
So you need to be considering that. In other applications, we have had, in some mixed-use buildings, we had site plan approvals for downtown businesses that were moving into mixed-use buildings that had residences upstairs. They were businesses that wanted to participate in art walk and have host music. The board required that they do soundproofing in order to prevent that nuisance from happening. So they didn't have to come to you to ask to, to get an entertainment license, but because it was part of their application process and they were upfront saying, yes, this is, this is a use we intend to hold in this space, you as a board need to look at that and say, is there going to be an impact to the neighbors as a result of that? And if so, set conditions on that. And you've done that in the past with soundproofing requirements.
Agreed.
I think we're on the same page.
Okay.
Jessica, on, on that music, on the, would the amount of decibels be part of it or that, would that be health issue?
The, in the past, the board has not put a specific decibel requirement.
Enforcement is sort of one of the issues.
All right, so, so your question was trying to define, wait a minute, what are we talking about and applying these? And I think Jessica's answer is the whole thing. We have to look at the special permit and isolate for each of these items.
You have to look at all of the uses that are being proposed in the space and what the impacts of those uses might be and how they, how they are applied through the finding process.
We are not going to explicitly say Fort Hill Brewery is permitted to sell food, to have food trucks on site.
You haven't, nobody has discussed food trucks at all during this permit process.
It's in the application.
I understand that, so you can, as a board, decide that you want to discuss that. There is another health food truck licensing process that they would need to go through. You need to think of it, this is, this is sort of the crux of the issue, is that, like any other development process, there's multiple permits that may be required. Sometimes somebody needs to go to conservation commission to, to meet the requirements of the wetlands regulations. They can still come to you and ask permission to do these things, but they still need to meet the requirements of those other permits. This is a similar situation. You're kind of like the umbrella permit, to some extent.
So we'll get through the criteria here. We're on the second one and this is exactly it. Jessica brought up a point about the offensive uses. We're obviously talking about sound. The applicant has looked at a sound option, which is plexiglass. The question I have is, first off, is that enough? And second off, is that something, and I think it is, that we want to explicitly put in as a condition that that has to be implemented when outside music is being played?
Well, I, for one thing is, in reason, it sounds good, but in fact, isn't inadequate soundproofing. How would we know unless this is actually done and the people around the Fort Hill and the brewery state that that's working? We won't know if that's working. I think we should adequately say, yes, put in the plexiglass as a soundproofing, but will it cover, cover it all?
Okay. Anyone else?
Is there? It sounded like there was some discussion at the licensing board about indoor versus outdoor entertainment. I don't know that that's something that the planning board can touch on, but I wonder if we should consider a condition that, you know, live music be limited to indoor only.
All right, can I say something here about this whole thing?
Go ahead.
I think he should be allowed to have music, but it should be determined by the licensing board what he can have or can't have. In other words, we're not in a position to say, yes, he can entertain it. If we did that, he could have anything down there. So if we said, yeah, he could have entertainment, but it would have to be licensed or governed by whatever the licensing board granted him to have it. So that would completely take out of our hands. We could say, yeah, he could have music, or he could have anything he want down there, but as long as it goes by whatever the licensing board gave him the permission to do.
Yeah, it'd be up to them to investigate that or look into that.
I mean, our concern is about offensive uses to the abutters in this item B of 12.79. And it seems that it's all about noise mitigation and it seems that the applicant has offered a possible solution. We're not, you know, at the end of the day, we just have to word that appropriately so that the, so that the authority of the building inspector, I guess in that case, would, I'm not even sure who would enforce that if we were to put a condition that there had to be a plexiglass piece in there. Who enforces that? No clue. I mean, is it even a reasonable thing for us to have?
Should we even put it in?
It's, you know, I want, I hear that there's concerns and we take those concerns seriously.
It has to be something in there.
But what? But what? I mean, I think that, I think they've offered plexiglass, so yes, we go ahead and put that in as a condition when live music is playing, obviously outside, you wouldn't need it inside, that you use the plexiglass has been proposed. I don't see what else more we can really reasonably expect.
I agree that we do need to be reasonable, you know, where we need to consider the neighbors' concerns, but we don't have anything that, we don't have a noise ordinance, there's nothing that, you know...
That's true. I mean, we're...
So I, you know, I think...
We're betwixt and between.
We have to be...
Normally I would kindly...
It's almost to the point where he has to go back to the licensing board and have, have them tell him what he can do and what he can't do.
So, so can we consider, when we get to the end, we'll kind of keep a list of these, that we're going to make a condition that says that, that, as defined, four feet high, 20 feet, did I get that right? Four feet high, 20 feet, plexiglass sound barrier will be used when music is played outside. Is that, is that an amenable condition to the people on this board?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, to handle the issue and resolve the issue of noise.
Yes. I have one other related thing to throw out there, which is hours of operation. We do have the ability to set hours of operation.
Yeah, we didn't go up to that.
One of the concerns has been that the posted operating hours are not matching the actual operating hours, because there's no condition in the permit that limits that. There's nothing, there's nothing enforceable if they go over their posted operating hours. So I think we should consider, for noise mitigation, you know, to keep noise within reasonable hours, to set actual operating hours for the tasting room specific use.
Even if they're going over though, I mean, they're closing, I think instead of seven, it's like eight o'clock, right?
Well, they tell us, we got a, I mean, three hours.
Their hours are, from what I understand, from all the information that I have, and even from the testimony from everyone involved, I don't think they're typically going past, I mean, what are normal hours of operation, you know, 10, 11? And they're way before that.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that, I mean, I actually think that we might consider setting them with, with a margin for, for that, because, you know, I don't think eight or nine PM is unreasonable operating hours.
I mean, that seems early. We've had other people come before the board that were going to have live music, and eight or nine seems pretty early for industrial zoning to me. I'm just saying, I, you know...
Yes, I agree.
I mean, I could be wrong. Debate this with me.
I don't have, I don't have a set hour in mind.
What was his proposal?
My suggestion...
Right on.
It was in, if you look at the first application that came through, there were some hours of operation that were proposed by the applicant.
Which are what stands right now, so...
I think they were extended, actually.
Let the page flipping begin.
They were extended.
Random.
It was extended, yeah. Nine o'clock was the hour they had.
And I don't think they're even requesting to extend it either, so it's not, you know, I mean, it hasn't been an issue.
Yeah, it is actually in the memo that they want.
They are too? Okay, so maybe I missed that.
Well, that they want to be able to extend it as they want to, and I think we need to set a hard end.
That's in the memo, not in, okay, I got, I got what you're saying.
I'm sorry, in the memo we asked for two to eight PM for outdoor activities.
Well, if that's what you want, why don't we set that as the standard? I mean, it seems, I have to be honest, that seems restrictive to me. I feel uncomfortable putting that on.
I'm just, I'm just trying to float options, because I think it's important to really have a thorough consideration of what our options are, in the interest of giving to our consideration. And because what we have is a situation where the police are being called because they're operating later than their posted hours, but it's not enforceable, we either have to say, "We're not going to enforce it," or make a decision to set those hours so that there is something that's enforceable. And it could be midnight, you know, it could be whatever, but the, the pouring license goes till whatever the state limit is. And we do have the ability to restrict that if we want to.
Well, if they want two to eight, and if they need more than that, they can always come back, but we can restrict, if they want two to eight, we'll just put it in as two to eight.
Is that, you'd be comfortable with that, with a condition for two to eight?
Well, we were requesting that for the outdoor activities.
It's outdoor.
Because if the issue is, is noise, we don't foresee there being a real noise issue with the indoor activities if the tasting room is open later than that. You know, I think their license, for their pouring license is a lot longer than that, which my understanding is that brewery doesn't have an intent to stay open until 2:00 AM.
I'm talking, I mean, I'm talking about hours of operation for the business. I'm wondering whether it's appropriate to have this business operating until 2:00 AM, given where it is.
The, I mean, they're not though, that's not even, I mean, they're just not even close to that. But it's a good point to, to say, should we put a stipulation in there already? And I think what Jessica was saying is that they already have a limit of hours in the, in the early...
I'm looking at, I don't know what page number it is, there's no page number on it, but outdoor public activities, and it's saying, "Outdoor public activity shall be limited to Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, and no more than four Sundays annually between the hours of 2:00 and 8:00." That's what they've requested.
That's for indoor and outdoor.
That's outdoor.
Outdoor.
Outdoor public activities.
Yeah, but indoors, well, how, what do you, what do you plan on, you know, what do you plan on going there?
I mean, we have to be careful there, because they're manufacturing, and it may be a situation, I mean, brewing occurs all the time beyond human, you know, and it may require maintenance, and if we set a...
I'm saying for the tasting room, for the pouring, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, what is serving is going on?
So, we'll just focus then on that comment. So we put a condition in exactly with what they said there. Jessica, would you repeat that line one more time, please?
It says, "Outdoor public activity shall be limited to Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, and no more than four Sundays annually between the hours of 2:00 and 8:00 PM. Such limitations shall not apply with respect to events or gatherings held for the benefit of East Hampton charitable or civic organizations, including but not limited to East Hampton Schools, Police Benevolent Association, and the like."
We need that part, just the hours, just the hours. Are you amenable to, to that condition as you put it? That's in your memorandum, is that correct?
To limiting the outdoor activities for two to eight, the Thursdays. Two to 8:00 PM, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, so that would mean that brewery couldn't, for example, host the Chamber of Commerce on a five, on a Wednesday at 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Yeah, I don't, I just don't like that. That's not, that's very restrictive, more restrictive than we would apply to any other business that you go up. Why would we do that? That is not business friendly.
I agree.
And that, we just can't.
So you would have to make the hours, you know, if you're going to do two to eight, it'd be, I don't know, if we say two to nine, then they're going to say one, not 10, you know, it's...
Is there an overriding city ordinance for any kind of this stuff that would, that if we didn't set a condition, it would default to if the police were called on them?
Their pouring permit has limmers of operation. The pouring permit says, "Hours during which alcoholic beverages may be sold are from Monday to Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Sunday, 11:00 to 1:00 AM. Service of alcohol to patrons must cease at 1:45 AM. All alcohol must be removed from tables by 2:00 AM. All patrons must be off the premise by 2:15 AM." That's the hours that's set in the licensing board.
Okay. And this is the same license that other breweries might have?
I presume, but I don't know the answer to that. I don't have anything to do with the licensing.
Do we need to modify that?
You know, I think it depends, like, generally, I don't think there's enough business for, for most of these establishments to stay open that late. Of course, that could change in the future, and then we wouldn't have any backstop, so that's, that's why I raise it.
Okay, so at this point, I want to know if there's anyone here that really wants to add that in? Add, or add some time limit to in, whatever it may be.
Besides the outdoor.
Well, the, the outdoor is in the memorandum, right?
But you still have to, you still have to say, "This is a condition that we're placing." Just because they have it in a memorandum doesn't mean that it's going to stand. The board has to deliberate and make that decision.
No, no, I'm just saying that that's not in their existing permit, that's the memorandum. Wait on, I, I don't, after thinking about this, I'm not, I don't think we do anything. I leave it, but it's up to you guys. If you, if you want to limit the time, I don't think it's appropriate. Other, other breweries aren't dealing with it. It, it, they already know.
Other breweries don't have outdoor, outdoor space.
Yeah, but other breweries are in more restrictive zoning with closer neighbors. Why are we putting this burden on them when, when, you know, we haven't done that to others? That doesn't make sense to me.
We're just restricting the outdoor. I think that's what we should do. If they are satisfied with the two to eight, we should put it in as a condition. And then, as far as indoor, it's already stated by state law, so I would, I would like to keep it...
You too?
Two to eight for outdoor, and then let them go by state law for the indoor.
So that two of you that want it, we're not going to vote up, because we'll vote at the end, but I just want to get a seat.
If he can, if he can live by two to eight, and he's telling us, "Yeah, I can live with that," well then, he can live with it.
She raises a good point, though. I mean, what if the chamber wants to do an event later?
I understand.
And it's not even two to eight, it's one of the days that's not the Thursday or the Friday or whatever, you know, I mean, what if it's a Tuesday they want to do an event?
No amplified music beyond these limited hours outdoors.
That's even better.
Yeah.
That's better.
And that expressly addresses the, the noise issue.
Works for me.
Yeah.
And that's even better, yeah.
So the criteria that we would put in is for outdoor music, there would be no amplified outdoor music before or after the hours of two to eight.
Yeah. The two to eight will stay in, but after that, if they're not amplified, they can go further.
Okay, hold on. No amplified outdoor music before 2:00 PM and after 8:00 PM.
Let's do it the other way, amplified music only between the hours, outdoors, between the hours, the, the hours that are in the memorandum.
That works for everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so are we saying just for Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays? Is this for every day of the week? I mean, there was other things here about no more than four Sundays annually.
I don't think we need the days in there, that's too restrictive.
I think we do.
Which days?
I think we should use...
The Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and whatever they put in, we should use that.
We can always come back and add one other amendment.
Anyone else feel that way?
They can always come back.
They can always come back and reply for longer hours, can't they?
Right.
Lots of process. I mean, I'd like to try and get this done, but...
Yeah, so would not. It's like we're all, wrap the thing up.
But the idea is, we're...
What hours are the, are the...
So two to eight, we've agreed on.
Competition open.
The two to eight...
Now they've asked for, what days again?
Thursday through Saturday and four Sundays.
Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and four Sundays.
And four Sundays annually.
Annually, with the, with an exemption for...
I think four Sundays annually is too hard to keep track of.
East Hampton organizations.
With the exemption for East Hampton organizations.
Is what they proposed. So when you talk about this chamber event, basically what they had requested is that there was an exemption for East Hampton charitable or civic organizations.
But I think with the no amplified music, we've, we've resolved that anxiety.
Right. We keep it at that. No amplified.
So, so we don't need to lock in on days? Just say the two to eight and don't put a day limit?
No.
Yeah, I think that's okay. I'm okay with that.
All right?
But, yeah, okay.
I mean, okay.
So, go ahead.
Jim, go, please.
Then their hours would be able to be open from whatever hours, any other bars?
According to the existing, I think it was the pouring permit that she raised.
The pouring permit, that's, that's by the state, so...
I just want to be clear on that.
Okay.
We, we do, we can make it more restrictive if we want to. We can supersede the state law. I'm not saying...
Yes, we can.
But if we haven't done it for other establishments of the same nature, while...
Yeah, exactly.
If he's got that kind of business, God bless him, you know?
Yeah.
Here, here.
I don't think we should restrict that.
Okay, so we have, we have a verbiage.
So no amplified outdoor music between the hours of 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Okay. Are there any other, I think we can move to the next line item. Is everyone comfortable then with that covering the protection of city amenities and abutting properties through the minimization of any detrimental or offensive uses or destruction of unique or important natural, scenic, or historic features on the site? We've got that covered now?
So we're, we're in accordance with that, I believe.
I think. Let's move to the next one. C. Minimization of traffic and safety impacts of the proposed development on adjacent highways or roads, and maximizes the convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site.
So this is the parking, stumbling block.
This is the issue.
Yeah.
And I wish it, I wish it wasn't a situation where we're probably going to have to ask you to come back to the ordinance, but it, the, Daniel Rist asked me a question. Did he not? I don't know. He's still here. He asked me why? And it's 10 point, what's the number, 10.74? Do you still have it up?
10 point, yeah, hang on.
174, I believe, where this comes from. And I want, I want, I want to comment here for the record. Say again?
I don't love it either.
I, it makes no sense to me why it would be, but...
Well, what I'm looking for is, I'm trying to find something in the zoning that allows a waiver, but I'm not finding it, but if you give me some more time, I could, there might be something in there. I would say from a professional standpoint, and I expressed this to the applicant when he dropped off the site plan, is that you have a gravel parking lot, but there's no line markings on the gravel parking lot. So how are you to ensure that people are parking the way that you're proposing it on the plan unless it's paved and striped?
Right.
If you don't, there needs to be some way to regulate that the parking is going to, people are going to park the way that you expect them to park based on how you're submitting it. If it's just a gravel parking lot, how are people to know that where they're expected to park?
Right, they're going to be helpless out there.
And that's my comment on that. And I, you know, I understand that it's, it's a rural location, and the gravel is better, and it's more environmentally sensitive, but from a parking mitigation standpoint and a traffic mitigation standpoint, there's got to be some level of control to understand how people are going to use that parking space, that parking area.
And I think that...
And I don't know what the solution is, but...
There's a big birdhouse up there.
Yeah, I was wondering about, like, you could just use a sign, like, signs to demarcate the individual spaces or something.
I believe the memo that was submitted today suggested spray painting the gravel.
Which is very impermanent.
I don't think that's a...
I guess, I mean, I'm just throwing things out there. I think another way to be, it would be to lot, uh, put maybe a chain, a chain in front, and then there would be a barrier here, a barrier here, the next barrier post, and so those would, would...
Delimit.
Right.
So, look, even, even when the neighbors, I believe, said they don't want to see pavement, I'm not sure anyone here wants to see pavement, but it's obvious that we need to consider we need to consider how it's, how it's enforced, that it actually is enforced, that it's not too many cars, and, and, and that's important to us, so.
Yeah.
So coming to a solution that would be a, a condition that's something like that, some other workable way of marking it, I think, sounds.
But also, we need to find, I mean, that the zoning ordinance.
I don't know how, I don't know how it was able to happen the first time, and so I need to see if there's some waiver language in there that allows that to happen.
We can't just spot pavement either, you know, put it down.
Like, no one wants it, and yet we're required to do it.
Right.
Yes.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't like that, I mean.
Takes a lot to amend it.
We could, we could put a condition in, given that we're very, I think, and maybe we're in violation of this doing that, I, I kind of want your opinion on that. If we were to say, condition, the, the condition is to allow gravel, given that, we'd have to come up with it, some delimiting method is used to clearly and permanently identify parking spaces.
You know, I really want the responsibility of trying to do that.
I mean, the other thing to think about when it comes to impervious surfaces is stormwater management.
Right.
And if you have an entire.
There would need to be a stormwater management.
There would need to be a storm management plan, I don't know what the square footage of the parking lot is, because it hasn't been measured out, so if there's a square footage trigger, that might trigger the stormwater permit, that's in the general ordinances. So it's, it's multi-layered, it's not a simple solution of.
Well, we're in the middle of dam if we do, dam if we don't, but the best criteria is to pave it, but then we need a stormwater management program.
Maybe, I don't know, again, I don't know, I don't know what the square footage is of the area, it's not, it's not marketed, it's not marked on the plan, so.
That's a mess, but we, it's a mess we have to deal with.
Right.
So, I want to kind of hear from you guys, and I'll say to me, I'd like to try to come up with a solution if we can today, because I don't, I personally don't think paving, even though this stipulates it, is the way to go.
I totally agree with you.
Do you agree, Chat?
No, I believe that we should, if it's no other way, paving will, will have to be done.
So you'd rather push it off and make sure it's paved?
Yeah.
I do not want to see it paved, but that appears to be the way that ordinance is written, I would like to know if there's a way that we can waive that to get around it.
And you feel that way too?
Same, if we can get around it, I'd rather see it.
Okay, so it would seem then that we shouldn't try to work our way around it now, that we need to wait for, for Jessica to get back to us, that's kind of what you.
Right, that's what I would like to do.
We need them to come back to us with, with a, to scale map anyway, so either way.
Okay.
It's not, you know.
So that's where we are, that we're going to ask you to, we're going to ask Jessica to come back with more information, and we're going to have to.
You can certainly also cruise the zoning in your spare time and, and to see why you can find a waiver provision in there as well, because I'm sure you read this.
What happens if we don't find anything?
Every night, so you can memorize it.
Well, no, we don't want to know.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it, let's, you know, okay?
All right.
Put the cart before the horse.
All right, are there any other traffic or safety impacts that we want to discuss other than, other than the parking?
Well, I was worried about some of the lighting, most of the lighting is on the building. The, you know, if you go out to the exterior area of the parking, you're in that blank corner, should there be some kind of lighting in these two blank areas? I know there's a street light, but that's not going to put enough light through that whole parking lot. I would like to see some kind of lighting in the far corners.
Do you have, I know Eric's not here now, is he? Oh, he is there, sorry, I didn't see you up front. Do you have any lighting in the back of the building at all?
Uh, we do off the building.
It's all off the building, not any in the parking lot itself.
Sure.
Okay, so, but there is lighting back there. Okay, what kind of lighting is it?
I think that anyone who can attest who's driven by Fort Hill Brewery at night, it is quite well lit.
Could it accommodate the sixty parking areas at night?
Right, as you're expanding the size of the lot, then the question is whether the light will still reach where the new parking spaces are.
Lot's the same size, it's not growing.
Right.
So the light covers that whole area in the back? Is that satisfactory to you, Chat? They've got.
I, it's satisfactory to me now until I see it again, seeing that we, we're going to have to have them come back with some things, and I would like to take a look at it at night to see how it's.
What are we asking them to come back with?
Wasn't it more?
Oh, well, that's us figuring out whether paving is required or not.
Yeah.
We're coming, so I mean.
That's right, and then we asked for, there wasn't a better, on the, on the porch area, he says it's five feet.
Oh, whether the five feet spacing, the measuring on that, okay.
That was a question.
Yeah, that, that is something.
That's just a general, the parking issue, and all of that criteria.
Agreed. I mean, that's the only question, is, is it five feet up in the front? All right, so you want lighting, does anyone else want to see additional lighting?
I can't say without having seen it.
Yeah, I'm going to drive by tonight.
Right, we're going to have to drive by.
So at this point, it seems that the only other issue that we may have concerns about is lighting in the back, and it's, as part of our comeback process, something that it looks like we want a site visit.
Yeah. Okay, apparently, is it motion, motion sensor lighting, Eric, in the back parking lot, gravel area?
It is not motion sensor.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's something we're going to want a site visit, take a look at, and maybe that the board brings up a condition when we move forward for additional lighting, maybe.
So, I, just a clarification on the site visit, is the board thinking that they want to schedule a site visit as a board together, or are you intending to go individually?
It's, it's a good question. I've been through that back area and seen that light, I'm comfortable with, with it myself. Chat, I know you want to go, if more than two of us go, I think we need to schedule, right, because it's a, it's a quorum if you have more than two. So, so Chat, is there anyone?
It would be preferable, I believe, it would probably be easier for the applicant if it was something scheduled, so that they know when you're coming, and then they can answer questions if you have them as a collective group.
Why don't we just be formal with it then, and we would like to schedule a site visit?
Okay, so we'll figure out what that date is after, okay.
So, site visit. All right, so, let's move forward.
Moving forward.
So we were on C.
Now D, go ahead and read it.
Okay, oh, adequacy of the methods of disposal of sewage and refutes and drainage of surface and subsurface water, this doesn't change, none of this, that doesn't change.
Unless we require paving, but.
Right.
So at this point, I don't think any of us have concerns with that?
No, not at this point.
Moving on.
Okay.
Adequate means of protecting wetlands, watershed, aquifers, and well areas, no change there either?
No, no, because they got the, well, if it's paved, there might be an issue.
Okay. I believe the Conservation Commission sent a transmittal letter stating they had no comment.
That's what I recall as well. All right, F, mitigation of adverse impacts on the city's resources, including the effect on the city's water supply and distribution system, sewage collection and treatment systems, fire protection, and streets. Don't see anything, the fire department had no additional comment as well.
No comment?
No comment there.
No issues?
The only adverse impact I can think of is the additional tax on the police force who is being called out there all the time.
That's interesting.
That's, that's, that's a very interesting way of putting it.
I mean, as our city resources, that's time that they could be, you know, responding to other emergencies.
I can't imagine what condition would cover that.
Just pointing it out.
All right, G, provisions for the off-street loading and unloading of vehicles incidental to the normal operation of the establishment, parking, lighting, and internal traffic control. When you deliver your kegs, there's kegs being delivered, coming in and out, what is the loading and unloading of that like? How much truck traffic is there, traffic overall?
Uh, I'd like to think that will increase, uh, it's predominantly going through the back door and through the loading docks.
Okay, and how much of that do you think happens in a day?
Eight times a day.
Okay.
Does that happen, I mean, like, after normal business hours?
Between eight and seven PM.
I don't see that as abnormal in, in any way, does anyone here have an issue with that?
No.
Okay, moving forward then. H, the applicant's efforts to integrate the development into the existing landscape through design features such as vegetative buffers and retentions of open space and agricultural land, the site's already developed.
Yeah, no, they're deployed.
And every, every comment I've heard about it is that the building is quite nice and blends well with the landscape, so I don't think we have an issue. I, minimization of the area over which existing vegetation is to be removed, where tree removal is required, special attention is to be given to the planting of replacement trees. Are you planning on taking down any additional trees?
There aren't any.
There aren't, so.
Little trees.
J, the consistency of the development with respect to setback area, placement of parking, architectural style, and landscaping of the surrounding buildings and development. It's already up, the parking issue, we are concerned about the five feet in the front, we need to make sure that the parking is five feet at least in the front. Okay, any other issues there? K, adequacy of the measures to prevent pollution of surface and groundwater to minimize erosion and sedimentation, and to minimize changes in groundwater levels, increased runoff, and potential for flooding.
That'll have to wait too, uh, being any paving has to be done.
But as of now, it's fine, I don't think we have.
As of now, it's, there's no issue.
And the final one, L, adequacy of the message, excuse me, methods to ensure that the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air or water pollution, excessive noise, or visually flagrant structures and accessories. And we're back to noise, which appears to be covered by two of them. I don't know about the flagrant structures or anything like that, I think the limit looks good.
The one thing that I'd like to go back on, he was saying that his loading and unloading the trucks are from eight to seven PM, eight AM to seven PM. If he's got cars going in and out of that parking lot, he'll have truck traffic too. I don't know if that's going to be a hindrance to people coming in and out of the parking.
Big trucks coming in and out? What, what kind of small, I mean, is it like a pickup, or what? So there's no actual, yeah, that may change at some point though.
No, I just didn't want to cause an issue with trucks going in and out, and cars going in and out, that there might be, yeah, and they're going to be doing that basically at the same time.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to put that across.
It seems like they have a, you know, pretty good circular driveway around the building, and so backup requests, it seems like they should be able to do that to me.
A circular driveway can accommodate a fire truck, it's been designed so that we can accommodate a fire truck that is in the fleet.
Okay.
Okay, so, obviously, the noise is an issue there, we've talked about that already, I think satisfactorily. Any other issues there that stand out? Air and water pollution? Nothing? So I think we've covered, we've covered all the items that we have to cover, and the, the issues, we have, I think, two line item stipulations, and we have to come back to look at what we can find as a way to, see if we can find a way to get around the paving thing, and we need you to come back to us to verify that there's five feet up front. Did I miss anything, folks?
Conditions aside, there's the closing of the actual allowed use, which seems like it needs to change, because.
Okay, the big one.
Yeah, higher level consideration.
Will you read your language in your memorandum of what you would like us to do?
Sure, so currently, it says, "The facility will produce and bottle alcoholic beverages and may host stores, but will not include a public retail component, and we propose adding comma, except incidental retail permitted by a manufacturing facility under the term of the zoning ordinance." And if you look at the definition of manufacturing facility under the zoning ordinance, it allows office, warehouse, and incidental retail.
Things like your T-shirts and other kinds of.
And the, and the growlers, and, and was allowed under the pouring permit, we can sell at the points to help market and all of here.
Okay, well, time to talk about it, folks, who wants to start?
I can see having them sell beer, okay, but then again, it has to be up to the licensing board, whichever they gave him, under his permit. So he can sell a beer, but it's got to be controlled by whatever the licensing board gave him.
Right.
The same, the same thing with the, with the music. If they said they can have music entertainment, well, it has to be under, under what the licensing board gave them to do. That's all I got to say about it.
Okay, anyone else?
I think that the language that they propose is pretty strong, I don't think that there's anything I can think of that would make it more clear, so I think it seems okay to me.
Chat, Jim, either of you guys? So you two wouldn't have an issue with the language they propose, is that, is that what you're saying? The language they propose, incidental uses, I'm summarizing.
Except incidental retail permitted by a manufacturing facility under the terms of the zoning ordinance.
You wouldn't have an issue with adding that language?
No, but aren't they covering, no.
Okay, I agree, I think that language really clarifies the issue. I mean, I, I think that that's, I'm amenable to, to adding that language in. So I think overall, when we come back, everyone here seems unanimous that, that adding that language in is appropriate. Am I right?
Just so we're clear, that then is limited by whatever, obviously is limited by whatever outside.
Manufacturing uses would be.
Right, and whatever conditions are stipulated.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, so we need to set up a site visit, and then we're going to need to reschedule this meeting and continue it again.
Oh, boy.
The conditions we have will be added into a motion that we make at the next meeting, so we won't vote on this at this point. Shall we start with a site, let's start with the next meeting, how about that? I don't want to wait too long, but really, it's going to come down to how long it takes us to research what we can do about paving. Do you think two weeks might?
I also think that, I believe you requested a full site plan from the applicant, and I think that there's, that you need to give them adequate time, and they need to tell us what time they need in order to produce the full-size map at an appropriate scale.
Which would enable us to determine that it is in fact five feet away. So we need a site map, a real one.
I mean, this is a real one, but it's just not to scale, so if you can just give us one that's to scale, that's accurate, or amend the scale so that we can measure appropriately, could be another option.
How long?
I don't know how this, you know, how far this got shrunk down, so it's no longer one inch equals fifty, it's something else, and I don't know what it is.
Right, so.
All right, unfortunately, my architect is undergoing health issues, but he is very much willing to help us out as quickly as possible. When is the next meeting?
Next week, right, do we have another one coming?
Yeah, I don't suggest that we hold this the same night that we have our other business. I didn't bring my calendar up, so.
I recommend two weeks, are we, there's a limit to how much time we can push this out before it goes right now.
No, once a month.
You've opened, you've opened the public hearing under the appropriate timeline, you can, you can take what you need.
So is two weeks workable for you?
We'll try our best.
Okay, I don't want to push you.
That would be December eighth.
I need to confirm that the room is available up here, is that the first or third?
December first.
Is that, that's the first Tuesday of the month?
Yeah.
December first, okay.
Do you think we have a chance, or no clue?
For what?
Availability?
I, I presume it's open, but I'll just need to confirm that.
Then we need to come up with a, a site plan visit, I, I do see you, we just need to finish our work here.
So what exactly are you looking at, at the site visit, just so that we're clear? I just, you know, I want to make sure that.
Lighting.
Existence of existing lighting.
Existing lighting.
Just going to be a nice place to light.
Yeah, we would seem to be, evening would have to be a time, so you're.
You do it at five o'clock, it's going to be dark.
Yeah, it's evening, so five o'clock.
Whatever fits your schedule.
Make it five, six o'clock would be.
Okay, you have to pick a date.
Yeah, six o'clock, and then, how about one of the hours, obviously, you're operating, so you don't have to, I don't know that that's a good idea, someone check me on that.
I, I'm only able, I would only really be able to attend on a Thursday or a Friday.
Well, that's operating hours.
Yeah.
Friday, six o'clock.
Okay, so you're going to go right when they're open and it's all.
All we got to do is walk around the back and look at the lighting, and in fact, seeing people use it, and if they can see or not see, is actually probably helpful to us in, in determining, you know.
So this Friday?
We're not opposed to you guys coming while there are people there.
All right, so is this Friday okay for everyone here? This Friday?
Sure.
Okay, six, this Friday, six o'clock.
I will not, I'm sorry, but I cannot be there.
It's okay.
I have plans already scheduled.
We have to just remember, everyone, the things that Jessica would tell us when we're there are that we're not in meeting, we can't deliberate, we can't discuss, we're there to look, we can only ask basic factual questions, we don't deliberate, okay, so I write about that?
Yes, you're on a fact-finding mission, so.
It's a fact-finding mission, that's it.
You can ask questions, but no deliberation, no decision-making on the ground.
Yeah.
Is the public generally invited to accommodate that?
I, I have no issue with that, certainly, I mean, please.
It's okay with me, have a view.
Okay, so we've picked the date, we've done it, I have, it's just about time to wrap it up, I see you raising your hand there, I don't want to get into too many detailed comments, but I will give you a chance, please, go ahead, please.
I will preface it by saying you've made it very clear that you're comparing it with other breweries, whose locations are presumably more in town. My concern has been all along the road itself and the safety of the road, so I'm hoping at the next occasion, the next meeting, you will entertain questions and comments that relate to the safety of the road. Eric's not opposed to speed bumps, but I've never heard any of you at any one of the meetings, zoning board, yours, licensing board, really talk about the safety issues, and particularly if you extend the hours, if there's no lighting.
May I follow that up? Is the, is it not the memorandum of October twenty-sixth, excluding that the memorandum and the discussion?
We're dealing with the special permit request. These memorandums have influenced, influenced some of our discussion, just as speaking again and adding pass.
Well, you went through many of the points, but you never got to the point, to their fifth point on traffic controls.
So I hear, both of you are saying about, about traffic controls, and, and I certainly don't, you know, I, I don't mind entertaining you as a discussion, I'll note that, you know, I went through it, and we went through and talked about traffic, and didn't bring up any additional issues. I think you just said speed bump, you're referring to on Fort Hill Road, am I, am I correct?
It's very narrow.
All right, that's not something that would have any, he doesn't have the ability to put speed. Okay.
I think the only, yeah, I don't think.
We don't have any purview over that.
I think it was brought up at a previous meeting.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you let us discuss? So I think there was somebody, there was maybe a city councilor at a previous meeting who suggested the appropriate, a method to take to, for road improvements, does anyone recall?
I know, I have a distant recollection of that as well, but I think that's out, you know, putting things on the main road is, is certainly outside of any request we could make to Fort Hill, I mean, that, that's not.
We can ask for things like.